I call order the December 19, 2019 Board of Commissioners' regular session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Michelle Patrick?
Present.
Commissioner Jake Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Chris Frisbee?
Present.
Commissioner Gary King?
Present.
Commissioner Tommy Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Jerry MacKinnon?
Present.
Commissioner Gethen Betty?
Here.
Your form.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence, and during that moment of silence, I ask that you keep Treasurer Brian Wentzauer in your prayers. His sister passed away last night. And after the silence, we'll have Commissioner King lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the December 19, 2019 Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' December 5, 2019, regular session as presented? So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. During Citizens Time, the Board Chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the Board. A person recognized by the Chair shall approach the podium and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the Board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for Citizens Time on the agenda, and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The Chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes, and should not allow any negative personal comments. Is there anybody who'd like to address their commissioners?
My name is Mary Jo Byrne. I'm the Executive Director for the Fountain Clinic here in Marshall. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you Commissioners and your predecessors that, I think, 25, 26 years ago made the decision to approve the Senior Millage Allocation Tax. It has done wonders for our senior citizens in our community. The program that we are the fiduciary of are the prescription program and the program I'm going to speak to, the dental program. We've been doing this fiduciary work for this program for many years, and usually, and almost, well, always, we've stayed within the allocation given to us. This year was different. We did not anticipate that we would have the bills at the end of the year that we did, and subsequently, we had $50,000 more in bills than what we actually were allocated at the beginning of the year. There were a few reasons for that. Some of the treatment plans that we thought would not involve oral surgery did. Any of you that have ever gone to an oral surgeon know the costs of that. You multiply that by several seniors, and the price is large. We probably last, earlier in the summer, let too many people into the clinic that needed a lot of help. Those bills don't come until the end of the year when their treatment is completed, and they were larger than we thought. And also, Grace Health has increased the number of dentists they have, so we saw more work from them than we were usually, what we usually see. We try to do the best we can to stretch the money. We did over 303 dental cleanings in our clinic for senior citizens in this community at no charge to the grant or to the allocation. We did those from our own. So, we do everything we can to stretch it. We know seniors need this help, and we're, we try to provide as much as we can to them. No one has turned away. That's an emergency. We take good care of them. They get the fillings, extractions, indentures they desperately need. So, we're asking that you look on this favorably for us, and we will continue to do the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Is there anybody else who'd like to address their commissioners? Anyone? All right, we'll move along. Are there any elected, appointed, or appointed county officials who'd like to comment tonight?
Commissioners, I just wanted to publicly thank all the law enforcement, first responders, EMS, firefighters that participated really over this past week to help assure that our visitors that we had in downtown Battle Creek, Calhoun County, came and left safely. And I include not just the President and the Vice President, but the thousands from out of this county that came, whether, whatever side they were on. We assured that they all went home safely. And it was a tremendous effort between a lot of agencies and many from outside Calhoun County. There were over at least 300 police personnel that participated over, and that's just local and state law enforcement agencies, not to count the several federal agencies that actually keep the President, Vice President safe. Our duties were, quite frankly, everybody else that attended to assure their safety. It couldn't have went any better. I believe there were only two arrests in the entire evening that were connected to the event, and that was two folks out of, actually, Detroit area that were asked to leave the venue once, and then tried to sneak back in some back doors, and were arrested for trespassing. But for those, but for those two arrests, it was really a very good night. And we had, Alleghen County Sheriff's Office sent 25 personnel along with 20 vehicles. So, I mean, we had representation from Alleghen County at that level. Berry County, Branch County sent a couple cars with deputies. All law enforcement agencies here in Calhoun County had personnel. We had actively 70 folks working at some point in time yesterday. So, we had to secure the airport, the, both processions of the Vice President and President. So, it's a lot of manpower. And then the City of Battle Creek, State Police, Kalamazoo Public Safety, all worked the arena in downtown, and we had some folks in the arena as well. But overall, it's exciting when you have the President visit your community. It's exciting when you have the Vice President visit your community. And it's a monumental task to take care of when they both come at once. And Chief Blocker, it's been great to work with him over the week, and it was truly a good event. So, I'd like to personally thank all those first responders, law enforcement personnel that, a lot stood out in the cold for very long times yesterday. So, but with that, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Come up to the podium more often.
Right. I know, you deliver, you get mail down.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Any other elected officials or appointed?
Good evening. I missed the crazy Christmas sweaters. I expected a show. I see the-
Had it just in case. I wasn't going to stand out, though.
Just not the same. I was going to say. Lucy and I showed up.
Lucy didn't know it was oddly Christmas Sweater Day, though.
It's cute Christmas Sweater Day.
Great.
Yes. So, I want to thank all the Commissioners for the support of Senior Millage. As Mary Jo said, we serve a lot of folks in need in the community. And I just want to thank all the Commissioners for your support, but I want to especially recognize Tommy Miller, who yesterday delivered a used refrigerator to a senior who has a brain injury and who doesn't really leave her house. She replies on the Meals on Wheels program for all her nutrition. Like many seniors who are lower income in the community, she lives on less than $1,000 a month in a trailer house in the village of Tecancha. And Tommy and some firefighters delivered a refrigerator to her yesterday in the true spirit of Christmas, and we just want to recognize him for doing that. She is a special case. We call her the bird lady. She has five birds in her house, and she came to my attention last February when Gerald Cummings, who's the Fire Chief for the village of Tecancha, went for a welfare check because the neighbors were concerned because they haven't seen her, and she was heating her house with her oven and with space heaters. And so, Community Action went and has replaced her furnace. So, and then, she just has a lot of needs. She has a rickety staircase, and we're trying to get that replaced with a rural development program. But she's someone that we've gone kind of above and beyond. When she had her brain injury, when she was 60, she was actually working as a guardian for Guardian Industries, which is one of our 10 grantees nonprofits. So, it's just, we want to thank Tommy for doing that and being in the true spirit of Christmas. Thank you.
What's up, Tommy?
Santa Miller.
Good job, buddy. Anybody else? All right, we'll move along. Special Order of Business, we have the 2019 Michigan State University Extension Annual Presentation by Julie Peau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come this evening and present our 2019 annual report. Next time, I would like to request that nothing else is on the agenda but me, all right? That's all I want to know. I think we did that last year. We postponed it to January. This meeting is supposed to be light, and it wasn't. So, I actually have a PowerPoint with a script to keep me brief, but I will be even more brief. Stand up here with me, Kathy. The annual report is an obligation we have for our commitment to Calhoun County in our memorandum of agreement that hopefully we'll be adopting this evening on your agenda. I wanted to share with you that diversity, equity, and inclusion is a primary tenet of how we do our business with MSU Extension. One of my primary objectives as a District Director is to make sure that our staff are inclusive and offering programs that are open to all. Our staff are trained in knowing and identifying their potential audience to make sure that we're hitting the people that should be in our programs, not just who's there but who isn't there, making sure that our programs are available. Hiring choices are also a critical decision and part of my job to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community and also meeting the diversity and representation of our clientele in our staff. MSU Extension, most of you are familiar with us, maybe more, some more than others. We have 865 faculty and staff throughout the state of Michigan and the areas of ag, children, youth and development, nutrition, health, community, economic development. Our network, we're in all 83 counties, so our network enables us to rapidly respond to emerging local issues, tackle issues statewide, and also be a trusted and reliable partner to local governments. So, the state there, you can see, I don't know if you guys can see the PowerPoint. We're in every state of the, or every county of the state. We're proud to say we now have an office. At one point in time in the last few years, that wasn't the case, but we are there every county of the state of Michigan. So, my job as District Director is to manage the seven counties in southwest Michigan. And so, I provide remote management to the Calhoun office. Luckily, we have a self-directed, independent staff, and with the help of the Community Development Director, we're able to manage the folks locally. But I'm, my job clearly is to deal with Commissioners and the relationships we have with the county, but also other external partnerships and making sure that the staff that we do have serving Calhoun County are meeting the needs of what's needed to happen in the area. So, we're known, the three-legged stool story, I have a whole page of things to read, but I'm just going to say, we're funded by the federal investment through the USDA, the state investment through the state legislature, and then, of course, our funding through the county government like Calhoun County. So, we've often said that we're a three-legged stool. Well, the difference is now that we're actually a four-legged stool, much sturdier than a three-legged stool, because now, along with those three important partners, we have all the partners that have come to the table with all of the other funding and partnering that they do to allow us to do our programming. And what's really interesting is that last year now, grants are 35% of our funding, which is now exceeds any of our other funding partners. So, that's really an interesting, it's a growth area for us. That's where we know we have to grow. Grants, foundations, sponsorships, service contracts, and the like, because, as you know, state and county dollars are not growing as much as we would like. So, we're looking for grants and things like that to forward our programs. So, this is the same information, just in a different format, showing you that the county investment is about 16% of the total funding strategy for MSU Extension, which is about 15 million. That 15 million is, leverages all of the other funding partners, obviously. So, the contribution that Calhoun County brings to that 15 million is part of the big pie that we wouldn't be able to do our work without. So, all those funding partners leveraging each other. Another graph just showing, as you know, funding over time has been very flat, and then that bouncy line there is actually our grants and foundations and service contracts. So, at your table tonight, at your places, you have a copy of the annual report. You also have a copy of our state legislative report and Kathy's 4-H yearbook. You also received it electronically. If you want more copies or would like to have access to that, that report will be on our website. All of the information provided in that very brief report, that snapshot, is available on our website, as well as our other stories and other program efforts that you can look at. So, in relation to program partnerships, I asked staff, I had this small list here, and I said, wait a minute, I got to do some more on this partnership piece. This is the whole point of this presentation. So, I asked staff for partners, and so, here we go. One page, two page, three page, three page, okay. Plus more, right? And I wanted to highlight our local partners, Community Development with Jen Bamba, and Brent, I think he was here, and Helen and her staff have been just such great office mates, and allows us to really think and get creative about how to leverage our programs together. And so, our relationship being in the Community Development Department, I think it really is working. So, there, I would say that they highlight they're our biggest partners. So, Kathy, two seconds, 10 seconds.
10 seconds.
At least she went from 10.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's how you got. Okay. She only gives me one slide, but I can talk a long time if you need to. I'm Kathy Fisher. I am the 4-H Program Coordinator here in Calhoun County. So, I coordinate all of the 4-H programs, traditional and non-traditional, directly in the county, as well as doing some statewide science programming with some colleagues. So, last year, I saw over 1,300 youth in 4-H programs. About 550 of those are in traditional 4-H clubs that meet year-round. Many of them take things to the fair, not all of them, but they're in some kind of formalized, structured club setting. The rest of those are in outreach programs that mostly I do or some of the AmeriCorps members that we've had. You met two of those last year. I have one again this year that's working on programs in Albion as well as in Battle Creek. So, we're hoping to continue our partnership with the VOSIS Center in Battle Creek, the Hispanic and Latino organization there that we started last year. We're also working in WK Prep High School in Battle Creek, doing some creative arts programming for them. So, that school is a non-traditional education setup at the school. They work in arenas as opposed to classrooms, and if you're really interested in that, I can talk about that some other time. It's a very unique educational model, but those kids don't have any of the typical extracurricular art, recess, music, those kinds of things at that school. So, we are going in and providing a version of the creative arts program that many of you are familiar with, that happens in Albion every year. We're providing a sort of similar thing like that to continue, to offer them some extracurricular activities there, as well as doing some career prep programs with them. Last year, we started these spin clubs, we call them. They're called special interest clubs, so they focus on a topic. And what you see here is, some of them that we did last year, we did one on maple syrup. So, the kids started from tapping the trees. Was a little weather dependent. Last winter didn't, sap didn't flow as well as we'd hoped last year, but, so they started from the beginning, where they went out and they determined, they learned how to identify the trees that could be tapped, for one thing, and then, how many taps they could put in, what size tree, all the way to making maple syrup and maple candy. The other, the middle one is our China Art Program. That one we did with the VOSIS Center. They created, the kids here create a piece of art at their discretion, whatever they choose to do. We give them supplies and let them be creative with it. At the same time, kids in China are creating art pieces as well. And then, we select pieces that are exchanged. So, now, at VOSIS, they have pieces of art that came from China that the kids then looked at, and there's a, we send little paragraph about, they send us paragraphs, we read them, they send ours to theirs. So, we have artwork in China, and the kids here have artwork as well. That was very fun. And then, the other one up there is our trapping class. So, we did a class with kids where they learned trapping regulations in Michigan, how to check, set traps, how to check trap lines, why we trap, is there an industry in that? They learned about the fur trade in that as well. And so, that was a great, unique class that the kids were able to go to. So, sure.
Our other full-time staff member in the office is Ally Rogers. He's our Community Nutrition Instructor, and we'll talk more about her next year. She'll have a full year under her belt. She's doing really great work with the SNAPAD Program Nutrition and Physical Activity Education. So, just a couple highlights for next year. MSU Extensions increase their capacity in community behavioral health education. That's with disease prevention management, opioid addiction, stress, mindfulness, wellness programming, and we're working more with seniors primarily and with school systems to provide mental health awareness, mental health first aid, those kind of programs. So, we now have an educator covering Calhoun County in the district in that area. I'm hiring a consumer horticulture veteran liaison position. Interviews on Monday for that. That will bring a master gardener program here to Calhoun County in August, which makes our master gardeners just really happy here in the area. They're working with me on setting up that program. The veteran liaison piece will be an outreach to veterans so that we can get more veterans involved in our horticulture education. Our food safety program instructor starts, and she will be primarily focusing on ServSafe throughout Calhoun County, Berrien, and Kalamazoo area. And then, we've recently hired a government and community vitality educator that will, actually, that's my old position, that will be providing more programming to our local governments and the community economic development arena. So, thank you very much. And as always, at any time, please contact me with any questions or interests, or if you have program ideas, please let me know, okay? So, thanks so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Our next item is Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Support.
Have a motion, support. Most of the action is appointing, reappointing people to different committees. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any special committee workshop or board reports? Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you, Chair. Just to this evening, first and foremost, Senior Millage met on December 6. As a matter of fact, after much discussion relative to what Mary Jo had just been talking about, we recommend the approval as a committee for the Dental Program Supplemental Request that you'll see on the agenda this evening, as well as, we did also have a discussion regarding the Senior Strategic Project Fund, but no vote was taken at this point pending further information going forward. We do not have a regular meeting scheduled in January of 2020. We do have a special meeting that will be held on January 3 specifically for the strategic fund. So, that's the first section relative to Senior Millage, and then also, the Trailway Alliance met on December 11. Kyle Lewis of Jackson County Parks was on hand to discuss the trail system in Jackson County regarding their also upcoming projects and how the trail will potentially connect to Calhoun County from the, from the east, if you will. And then also, Patty Hope Meluish was also on hand to discuss water trails. That's simply becoming a big thing in developing maps to show access points, which would take about a year to complete, to give people that ability to know where they need to go. And further discussion was held on potential funding sources for that endeavor as well, so.
What group was that with?
I apologize.
About the water trails?
Kalamazoo Watershed.
Thanks.
Yep, Council. Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Vetti.
Thank you, Chair Frisbee. Last week, I had the privilege to attend the Boy Scouts Annual Voice Leadership Breakfast, and Commissioner Tompkins was there also. And Summit Point, which I serve as the Board Chair of, along with the CEO, Jeanne Goodrich, received their service award for leadership, service, and dedication of stewardship in the community. And it was a lovely breakfast. It was really, really nice, and I hadn't been to something Boy Scout-related in a long time. My father was a Silver Beaver, which, strange name for an award, but it's a, if you know the Boy Scout community at all, it's a, it's a very high honor. And so, anyway, so it was nice to go do that, and Summit Point has been through so much, and it was so nice to have something nice said about us and to get an award, so.
You bet.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to say, may I reject just, certainly what a wonderful event, and we had great people that we were able to award, the folks we were able to award.
Yeah.
Summit Points, our Commonwealth, Larry Williams, there were a few others. It was just a great event, so.
Yeah.
Really good. If you ever have an opportunity to go, I would certainly encourage you folks to go if you get the chance.
It was very cool.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, MLFDA met this afternoon. We're already planning for Blues Fest for next summer. The biggest hot topic is marijuana in this, our area. We approved to sell lots four and five to a company. They're from up north. I didn't get their name, but there are going to be a testing facility. That's all we're going to do. And a lot of concerns, as much as we got going on in this area, are they going to flood this market in five years? They're going to abandon these properties? You know, they're going to build these up, and it's all unknown. It really is. But that's a big hot topic, and most of the meeting was mostly about marijuana. That's all I have.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. The Local Revenue Sharing Board met today. We, we only met for, to receive the Upjohn Institute's impact study. This is the second impact study that the Local Revenue Sharing Board has commissioned. It's going to be available for the public soon. Part of it, you know, is draft form today is what we received, but it's going to be put together, and I'm sure it'll be made available to everyone once that's, put everything in one spot.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we'll move along. We have a very large agenda tonight, so we're going to turn it over to the Administrator Controller, Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items to report. Some changes in county leadership were announced this week. Congratulations to Clerk and Register of Deeds Ann Norlander, who has decided to retire at the end of January. There was a press release that went out today for anyone who's interested in being appointed to take her place through the end of 2020. We also learned that Chief Judge Mike Jackinett was reappointed for the next two years as the chief judge, and also, he has appointed Judge Halcy as the Chief Judge Pro Tem and Presiding Judge of the Circuit Court, and Judge Beardsley as the Presiding Judge of the 10th District Court. And then finally, our Public Defender, David Mackled, announced the promotion of Attorney Karen Kelly to the Deputy Public Defender position. From the Road Department, the big news of today was the, that D-Drive North in Emmett Township, which is between six and a half mile and Beetle Lake Road, was reopened to traffic today after the culvert failed in 2008, so it's been more than a year. That road didn't actually get resurfaced until, but it will next year during the first phase of Emmett Township's local road improvement program. That's exciting. It'd be a lot less inconvenient for the public. And then finally, I just want to mention that in the Consent Agenda, one of the items was to schedule the organizational session for 2020, and that is now scheduled for January 16, 2020. So, that will be the only Board of Commissioners' meeting in January, and that will be where we will elect the 2020 Vice Chair of the Board. So, that concludes my report, and as Chair Frisbee said, we have a very long agenda, so we're going to try to keep it moving. First item is the approval of the MSU Extension Agreement. So, that includes a partnership in which the county provides the office-based clerical staff supplies, and then, the university provides Julie Peau's leadership, and also, Kathy as the 4-H Program Coordinator. The amount, there's a discrepancy. You'll see two different dollar amounts, so the correct amount is what's on the agreement itself, $83,300.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 agreement for the extension services provided by Michigan State University? State University as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion supporter, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B2 is on page 46 and this is an item that you see every year until we're done with it. This is the 2020 application for survey and remonumentation grant. So state funding provides about $75,000. The county has decided through designating deed recording fees to add to that. That's now up to, close to $25,000 estimated for next year. The grant is supposed to add 65 corners to be completed next year on top of the 2,660 corners that have already been done from 1993 to the present. So this is a long-term project and Brett Thalen is here from GIS, so he, through community developments oversight, manages this grant and then you'll see, following the grant every year, you'll get contracts to appoint the surveyors who actually do the work.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 application for a survey and remonumentation grant as presented and authorize the Administrator Controller to sign the application on behalf of the county?
Still move.
Have a motion supporter, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B3 is on page 50. This comes from the Health Department. Our Deputy Health Officer, Bridgette Rickenbaugh is here. They're requesting to add some more school nursing capacity to the authorized staffing allocation report and this was the request of Lakeview Schools. And so this will add 20 hours a week to the school wellness program. It's mostly covered by the school district paid for and then the Health Department has some staffing savings this year that they will be able to fund the difference in between what the school is paying and, and what is needed to cover that cost.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the addition of point four, full-time equivalent public health nurse to the authorized staffing allocation report along with the associated budget adjustment?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion supporter, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Item 12B4 starts on page 52 and you heard about this request. This is the Senior Milage Allocation Supplemental Funding Request for the Dental Assistance Program to the Fountain Clinic who partners with Grace Health. Their current contract is $375,000 and this will add $55,544. Senior Milage Allocation Committee already approved that and as noted, starting next year, there's a new three-year contract for this program.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Senior Milage Supplemental Funding Request for the Dental Assistance Program administered by the Fountain Clinic for $55,544 for cost incurred for dental procedures through December 31st, 2019 and authorize the Board Chair to sign the contract?
So moved.
Was it sure you were done yet or not?
Have a motion support. I was taking a breath.
Okay.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes. Yes. Oh my God, sorry.
Motion carries.
Item 12B5 comes from the Road Department. This is a request to award a bridge design bid for S Drive South, which is in Athens Township, to a bridge company called Brecking Bridge, who was the low bidder and has a lot of experience working with our Road Department and others. Our Managing Director, John Midgley, is here if you have questions. As noted here, this is an item requested by the NHBP Tribe and as such, they are cost-sharing 50% of the design. This is just for the design, this is not actually the cost of the new bridge, but the total of $23,580 and the Road Department will, will cover half of that. And the issue was the load restrictions on that bridge are actually at the point where they're impacting public safety response.
Okay. Can I have a motion to award the S Drive South Bridge Design Contract to Brecking Bridge and authorize the County Administrator Controller to sign all necessary documents to execute the contract upon review and approval of the Corporate Corporation Council?
So moved.
Have a motion support. Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes, I was just wondering, the, the cost of the bid is so different from the others. We're familiar with this company and there, we, there's a reason why theirs is so low as compared to the others?
Yes, John can answer that.
Yes. Brecking Bridge has been in business, I think they incorporated like 1983. It's a very small firm. I, I know it's, it may only be him and one or two other people if there even has that much staff, so he has very much, his overhead is very low. It's not like running, you know, huge spaces and that type of thing, but they, they do do excellent work. The other thing I'd like to add is if this project moves forward to the construction phase, the tribe will be paying 100% of the construction costs.
That's a good thing to add.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Next, we have a few employee benefit renewal contracts that we typically bring to you at the end of each year. First one is 12B6 on page 76 and this is a new contract for the third-party administration of our workers' comp contract. So the county is self-insured for our workers' comp claims, but we engage a company to help with those claims management, try to get people back to work and work with the providers. So we're proposing to change to a new company called Comprehensive, not a new company, but new for us, Comprehensive Risk Services LLC. And we're recommending a three-year term. One of the things that was attractive about their proposal is they, they bill in a flat fee process that's all-inclusive versus some of the other proposals that we got that had a lot of itemized additional fees that's hard to predict the budget impact. So it's about a $19,000 cost for the administration on an annual basis and we're, I guess, happy to have our new agent that we also work with through MMRMA and IBEX become our new broker. So we're kind of pack, repackaging our workers' comp, trying to make sure that we're getting the best value for the county and, and the best support for employees that have to file workers' comp claims.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the service agreement and transfer agreement with Comprehensive Risk Services LLC as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion in support, discussion. Commissioner King.
This is the same company that manages our MMRMA claims?
No, we're using the same broker, Craig Manser, who works for IBEX and is our agent for our MMRMA. So we're having, we have the same agent now that we do for property and liability and workers' comp. This is not a contract for the agent, but he helped us to do the bids for this and to find this.
I mean, I just know how people love dealing with MMRMA, so I couldn't imagine putting our employees to have workers' comp claim through that.
No, that's why we have this separate third-party administrator.
Great.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Next, item 12B7, we have the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Renewal. They are a third-party administrator for employee health insurance, also self-insured for our health insurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield processes all the claims and provides for all kinds of discounts and agreements with the providers. They are introducing some new programs that reward providers for keeping their costs down, for controlling costs and for some performance-based metrics. So there are some new provisions, which is why the agreement that used to be just a couple pages is now more than 20. The costs associated with this are, are substantial. This is not insignificant. So again, we pay all of the county's claims, which are over $5 million a year for all of our employees. On top of that, Blue Cross Blue Shield charges an administrative fee per employee. They have not increased the fee for next year, so that's the good news, but it does total over $400,000 a year. And then on top of that, because we want to mitigate the risk of very large claims, we purchase stop-loss insurance and that is at a $180,000 threshold. So that protects against any individual that has over $180,000 in a claim for that year, we're protected. The stop-loss insurance kicks in after that and pays the difference. That actually went up by 16 and a half percent within this contract and totals about $650,000 a year. But we do need that, we do need that protection. We work with benefits consultants, Aon, we have for several years. We are going to bid out our benefits consultant contract next year, but Aon is very instrumental in helping us to find the best providers to work with and also to negotiate the best rates. And so we're comfortable in recommending this, that we renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield for next year.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Agreements as presented and authorize the Board Chair to sign on behalf of the county?
Still move.
Have a motion supporter, is there any discussion? Just have one question. Can you repeat the number, the amount for claims in a year? Five million something?
Yeah, no, let me just, just look it up really quickly because I bet it's around.
Because that's a staggering number.
It is, it is a big number, so I want to make sure.
And why it's important to have such great oversight of it.
Kim might know it. Actually, they're projecting, our total cost is about $7 million, but that includes this additional. So claims, claims are somewhere around five million?
Say five million.
And then, so then it's plus prescriptions and then plus all these administrative fees and stop-loss.
So, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those, and actually, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
12B8 is the final one related to employee benefits. This is a recommendation for pharmacy benefit management with a company called Express Scripts, which we have worked for in the past. The difference is that Aon was able to, Aon has its own prescription coalition and what the coalition does is gives us sort of the economies of scale. We get a bigger discount because it's a larger group. So they have recommended that if we join, we currently spend about $1.7 million on prescriptions for employees. This is supposed to result in about $150,000 less than that spent, so $150,000 less next year than what we've been spending over the three years. It's about a $625,000 savings versus what we're paying right now, so over 10%. Again, directly as a result of having our benefits consultants help to, help to find us these better programs. And I also really need to give the credit to Kim Arshambo, our HR Director, doing less handoffs tonight just to try to keep us moving quickly, but these are really her contracts and HR manages all of these, all of these contracts and all of the relations with our employees to answer their questions and get them the proper benefits.
Nice job.
Can I have a motion to approve the pharmacy benefit management agreement with Express Scripts as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchet?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carries.
Okay, we're almost at the halfway mark. 12B9, actually the next three items I'd like to talk about a little bit together. These are, as you know, we've been bargaining with three of our employee groups whose contract ends at the end of this month. And so we have a reach tentative agreement with all three of them, the Prosecuting Attorneys Association, the UAW Road Workers and the Sheriff's Non-Supervisory Group. So you'll, the next three items are the tentative agreements with those. And because this all got finalized within the last week or so, and actually, one of the unions, I think, is not voting until tonight, it's not quite finalized, so Kim did have to scramble quite a bit and as a result of that, I'll, what's in the packet is some of the information, the summary, and then we also sent out, she sent out under separate emails, some attachments. So I'll describe what you have here versus what came separately and, and try to summarize those. And just in general, because we have 10 different union groups and they have staggering terms, we definitely try to look at internal equity when it comes to pay increases, when it, we try to use similar language to all of the economic-related provisions like paid time off, bereavement leave, things like that. But then we also recognize the differences. For example, with the sheriff's deputies, their paid time off is going to look different because they have to work holidays. So there are differences and we, we try whenever we can to keep things consistent. And we also, starting a few years ago, wanted to make sure that we looked at external market factors. So one of the groups tonight is the final group where we're recommending additional increases over the cost of living pay adjustments just to account for the fact that their salaries were shown to be considerably under the average of our similar counties. So that's kind of in a nutshell and, and then we'll start with 12B9, which is page 146, probably the simplest one. This is the Prosecuting Attorneys APAA and they're not represented by an organized union group, but we have agreed to bargain with them, they have an association. So this is one of the cases where the county and the prosecutor are co-employers. Dave is here tonight and he and his staff participate along with Kim and I on, on the management side for bargaining. They have, we're recommending a two-year agreement with them and that, and that was really at their request. They have 14 attorneys and just, interesting, all but three of them have been newly hired within the past 10 years. And I think that's one of the things that Dave talks about, being short-staffed, but also having a learning curve with so many new people. They are, we are recommending for the next two years, pay increases, basically cost of living, inflationary rates of 2.5% and 2.75. They have a total payroll of about $1.1 million, so those increases over the next couple of years, when you include the fringe benefit impact, are about $35,000 for the first year, $47,000 for the next year. And this is one where we had the, the full final contract attached to the boarded-end item and then Kim sent out separate, separate memo of the contract changes and the summary of, of the cost impact. And I would like to ask you and/or Dave if you want to talk about any other changes on APAA.
That's my question, yeah.
It was basically economics for this group.
There are no real other changes. You know how we feel about more attorneys. One thing they did ask about was that they're, they're concerned about their parking. They would ask for a security area or at least assigned parking when there's a, when there's jury duty, if they have to go out to a meeting and come back or something, they don't have a parking spot, is their primary concern.
I can respond to that. So although parking is not an item that's subject to bargaining and is not in their agreement, we are following up on that request, and through Brad and through facilities, they are getting ready to add some more designated county employee-only parking behind the Justice Center. So that's in the works, it's not done yet, but we are, we are aware of that request and trying to help a little bit.
Their primary concern is running into jurors, coming back and forth because the jurors park in the same parking lot as the prosecutors do.
Good point. Mr. King?
What's wrong with running into jurors?
What's that? There's nothing wrong with it. Some people can complain, well, the prosecutor spoke to a juror, they may not know who the jurors are. Therefore, you have an appearance of impropriety that someone could claim would result in a mistrial. As far as our courts are concerned, I don't believe they would ever be granted. But from my attorney's perspective is they just want it to not even be an issue.
Before we go any further, can I get a motion to approve the APAA collective bargaining agreement as presented?
Still moved.
Have a motion support. Any other discussion? Anymore, dear? Okay. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the third one, item 12B11, is the POAM collective bargaining agreement with the sheriff's non-supervisory employees. I know the sheriff's going to want to talk a little bit about this one, maybe. But this, again, where the county and the sheriff are co-employers, so we have representatives from county administration to, on behalf of the economic piece, we have the sheriff and his team there to talk about operational issues. We bargained for, was it eight months? We really, this one was, was the longest and most complex. And the, we talked with you in a closed session not too long ago, so hopefully, none of this is shocking, but we had, we did have some goals around operational things that the sheriff wanted to propose, and then mainly, the, the discussion was about the economics. And we actually had a goal to try to help lower the employees' retirement costs. The employees were paying close to 15%. Those rates, we had MERS in a few times to explain that the rates are going to continue to go up, and it really causes pain for employees when they say, even if our wages are up to market, which they weren't, our bottom line net check is not because we're paying so much into a defined benefit plan, much higher than other counties are paying, much higher than other, our county employees are paying. So one of the goals was really to invest in a solution that would, would lower that, and then also to implement a differential on, on top of their cost of living in order to bring them up to the market wages. And with the reason that their defined benefit plan was, contributions are so high, is this plan, like many others, was started with no upfront funding and the allowance that employees could get into the plan with their vested service credit. So it really started with a huge number of unfunded liabilities to the tune of about $11 million at this point. The plan is 73% funded, but it has unfunded liabilities of about $11 million. This group is about 100, what I counted here is 158 employees, probably give or take a few. Similar, about 58% of those are new within the last 10 years, so the sheriff's been mentioning quite a bit of turnover in that office as well. And so what we're proposing is a three-year contract from 2020 to 2022. The first, first, second, and third year will be the same cost-of-living increases that I just mentioned, 2 and 1/2, 2.75, and 3. On top of that, there are adjustments of a half a percent, 2 and 1/4, and 2 for the market differential, that would bring the total increases to 3%, 5%, 5% over the next three years. And really, the, the big goal that we had was accomplished in that our tentative agreement is to close the defined benefit pension plan to new hires. We would need to move forward with bonding, issuing pension obligation bonds to pay MERS for the unfunded liabilities. And then we're offering to cap the employee rate at 11% for the first year, 10 and 1/2 for the second year, and 10 for the third year. So that, that will cost the county a little bit more. Right now, we're, we're paying about a million a year to MERS for this group of employees. We'll pay, we'll have savings of about $250,000 a year average if we issue the bonds, because that deal does come with savings or we're not allowed to do it. But we will pay probably $300,000 more a year, just to continue paying the normal cost even after the, the defined, or after the unfunded liabilities. So that difference between $300,000 a year, $250,000 a year, is going to cost the county about $50,000 a year more for their retirement over the next three years. But what's supposed to happen through attrition, less people in the plan, the normal cost goes down, we've got a fixed debt service, and in the long term, I think this really gets to what both sides had in mind for a solution for this plan. There's variables in that, those estimates that I just reported, interest rates for the investments, bond interest rate, you know, how quickly employees leave and how long they collect. And then we're offering new employees the 401K, same deal that we have for all other countywide employees, where we match up to 7% if the employee puts in 5. So that's really, I'm focused on the economic pieces. We have, I think this one had two pages of contract changes, and so I'll ask either one of you if you want to add to the other accomplishments.
I wasn't going to say a whole lot more, really, the cleanup language throughout, as Kelly was saying, trying to make it consistent with some of the other agreements with the bereavement leave and those types of things, changes to the wages as far as the market adjustment, but there, there weren't any changes to fringe benefits, things like that. The rest of that is all status quo.
I would just clarify, I know Kelly didn't mean it to come out the way she said it towards the end of it, but she mentioned the big goal, and then was to close the pension, defined benefit. She didn't, the big goal was trying to figure out how to lower that cost of the defined benefit. The solution was, ended up being closing the defined benefit to new hires. Not terribly excited about that in the long run, but it's the only way to fix that issue that was created 20-some years ago. And I think, back when I hired in, probably eight out of 10 of us were planning on retiring from here. I think those folks that I hire now, maybe two out of 10, that's probably stretching it, maybe one out of 10 are planning on retiring from here. And it's not about the job they do, it's just the generation they're in. Most folks are changing jobs on average of every five years, and will, and not just changing jobs, but professions. So I'm not excited about going to a defined contribution where that makes it more mobile, where they could hop between law enforcement agency to law enforcement agency, especially when every law enforcement agency, for the most part, is hiring, along with corrections. Right now, you've heard me say it all along, hiring is the hardest part of my job right now, and keeping those folks is tough, and it's, it has to do with, there's a lot more money in the private sector, and there's a lot of jobs open, and, and we weren't really portrayed well in the media and by some politicians for several years that made a lot of folks not want to get into this noble profession of law enforcement and corrections. But I would ask you to support this contract, and it does help our employees take home pay, and they'll notice it right away. The long-term effect of closing the DP plan, we'll see down the road.
Can I have a motion to approve the POAM collective bargaining agreement as presented?
Still moved.
Support. Have a motion support. Did you have something else? Okay. Any discussion? I would echo a lot of what you're saying. I have a little bit different take in that closing pensions is a good thing for taxpayers long-term because of the unfunded liabilities, and, and that's, that's a strategy that I've supported for a long time. But as I said from the get-go, I didn't want to harm anybody. And I think this plan, or how we're going to do that, is an exact example of how we're not going to harm people. It's an agreement in a bargaining session. We lower the long-term risk to taxpayers, but we give the employees a better deal. They take home more in their paycheck, which is important in keeping people. You're exactly right, hiring people today is a nightmare. The quit rate is the one thing that I look at, and, and it's the highest it's ever been, and that means people who have jobs that are leaving their jobs and going to other jobs, it's never been higher in our nation's history. So we have to create an environment that stays at the top or at the market rate or above. We have to treat our employees with respect and dignity and, and give them all the tools that they need to do their job and do it well. I think this is a, a great way to say we both reached some goals, and I appreciate the bargaining team to do that on both sides. That was a long discussion over many years with some of those POAM members about that, and not a softening of stance. I think we both saw each other's issues, and so I'm really glad that this is coming to an end in this way, so. Any other discussion?
I would just say one more thing, and Manager Scott mentioned that we bargained for eight months. We only met four or five times, so.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't a drawn-out process. We really, the, I would like to thank the POAM and their staff.
Absolutely.
As well as, uh, uh, city, County Administrator Scott and Kim Orshambo.
Can't tell where you've been the last 10 days.
I don't know where I've been the last 10 days.
Me either.
Um, but I, I can't thank the group from POAM and the administration group and my administration. It's tough when you're negotiating as co-employers. Sometimes we see things differently.
Absolutely.
So it, it, we not only bargain at that table, but then we go into caucus and we bargain between each other, so. But I, I greatly appreciate working with Kelly and Kim.
Takes great leadership to come to good, good terms and a big change, and that's what I think we have on all sides of that, so. All right, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?[1501.33]
But I can't thank the group from POAM and the administration group and my administration. It's tough when you're negotiating as co-employers. Sometimes we see things differently.
Absolutely.
So, we not only bargain at that table, but then we go into caucus and we bargain between each other. But I greatly appreciate working with Kelly and Kim.
Takes great leadership to come to good terms in a big change and that's what I think we have on all sides of that. So, all right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner E.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item 12B12 is page 176. This is a request to authorize us to sign a contract with a company called NeoGov. They offer software and website-facing information that allows for HR recruiting, job posting, applicant tracking, screening, everything related to what we have on our current website. And what we have on our current website is actually coded into the website. And as you know, we're about to flip the switch to a new website. Once we do that, we needed to find another solution that would offer the same ability for us to post our jobs and applicants to apply online. So, we were fortunate that we were able to identify a company that works with the state of Michigan already and was selected through the state's MyDeal program. So, has very favorable pricing and in addition to that, they offered us a 25% discount. And this will do some wonderful things over and above what we have now, including some EEO compliance tracking and reporting. It will actually put in the minimum requirements and it will do an initial screening of the applicants and it allows applicants to create a profile through that process, what they can use to apply for jobs with us, jobs with the state, anybody that uses the governmentjobs.com platform. It makes things a lot simpler. So, very reasonable investment and ongoing solution that we hope to be successful and continue for the first year. It's about $27,000. It will come out of our capital improvement fund for the upfront costs and then on an ongoing basis, it'll be $28,000 or so that will be built into our IT budget, just like all of our other software subscription costs.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract with NeoGov as presented?
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner E.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B13 is on page 179. This is a request that you approve updates to the road department's mailbox replacement policy. This one I am going to hand off, but just, the context is, this is one of the road commission policies, former road commission policies that we inherited in 2012, has not been updated and needed to be, number one, just to note that we don't have a road commission anymore. But as noted, the main goal was to permit quicker resolution of mailbox damage claims. So, this is very timely and I know we've already had some this year. And I am going to hand off to our Corporation Counsel, Jim Dyer, who worked with John Medley to look at what other places do, consult with our liability insurance company for best practices. And I think we have a policy here that is much simpler, much clearer, and much more beneficial to us and the public.
Thank you, Kelly. The policy that we're proposing actually is a modification to the Policy 514 that defines what a proper mailbox is, what a safe mailbox is, and how they can be placed and located, that sort of thing. And there's really no change to that part of the policy. But the change that we do make essentially clarifies a couple of things that, like I said, we're not changing what is a safe mailbox, but we are saying that we will not, in effect, grandfather an unsafe mailbox. If it's unsafe, we're neither going to allow it to be placed there or pay any damages when it is damaged. That's one of the, probably the principal change that we make. And a lot of the other changes with respect to the actual policy for replacement of damaged mailboxes is, we're really trying to reflect the actual practice that we use now. And that is if, with one exception. Right now, you essentially, you have to prove to us that if your mailbox is damaged, that it was damaged by contact with the truck physically, not just damaged by thrown snow. And what we're saying now is if you, if you report damage to your mailbox, regardless of whether it's by thrown snow or contact with the equipment or not, we'll replace it. If you, we will give you a mailbox or a post or both, whichever the case may be, subject to you installing it yourself and agreeing that you're going to limit your damages to that, the replacement of the physical mailbox and post. If you, it also, the policy also states that the managing director has the authority to settle claims up to $100 that go beyond that, okay? And in consultation with the Corporation Counsel. And finally, if that doesn't satisfy the person who has had a damaged mailbox, then that claim gets reported to me and I submit it to MMRMA for handling and adjustment as they normally handle their risk management claims. And it doesn't specify MMRMA, whoever our insurer might be. That was one of the changes that the executive team requested. So, that's essentially it. We were moving the claim, the provision that you need to prove that our equipment or even our snow damaged it. If the damage occurred during snow removal operations and you report it within a timely period after those operations and you provide some evidence that your property was damaged, we'll replace that at, you know, again, you installing the mailbox. Beyond that, the policy has other provisions, but that's the essential, essential solution.
Can I have a motion to approve the amendment to Policy 514 concerning the proper installation of mail and newspaper boxes as presented?
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, I was just wondering if you can explain what an approved mailbox is? I think you said.
The mailboxes are, the style and construction of mailboxes are approved by the United States Postal Service and that's what it refers to.
Okay.
And in fact, most of the, pretty much every mailbox you're going to see at a local hardware store or a home furnishing store is going to be an approved mailbox.
And then what would we consider as viable evidence of damage?
Photograph of the, photograph or something like that, certainly. Yeah.
Commissioner Miller?
I think this is a good idea. I mean, but I got a couple of concerns, like there's a lot of mailboxes out there, especially nice for subdivisions, they might have a $3,500 mailbox that's all brick. I mean, by that case, what are we going to do? Are they just, they're fine to keep them there or are we going to ask them to remove those?
Well, the current policy, the current policy required the managing director to immediately act to remove those sort of mailboxes. But in actual practice, what we would normally do is determine, does that mailbox actually, is it a hazard to the motoring public? In fact, we get those kind of requests all the time. Happens all the time around lakefront property. Somebody's garage extends a foot and a half into the right-of-way and we want you to make that person tear down their garage because it's near right-of-way, but it has absolutely no impact on the use of the right-of-way. And frankly, mailboxes are useless unless they're in the right-of-way, when you get down to it, because they have to be close enough to the curve in most subdivisions to be usable by the mail service. And that is within the right-of-way. So, if it's a $3,500 mailbox and our snowplow hits it and destroys it, that's going to be a claim that's submitted to the MMRMA, frankly.
Well, my concern is, okay, if it's not a legal mailbox.
Then if it's not a legal mailbox, we're saying, we're not going to pay for it.
Well, how could it, sorry. Are they going to get a post and a mailbox handed to them if they got?
If that's what they want, if that's what they want.
And if they don't, what if they wanted that whole thing replaced? That's not, but it's not legal.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
If we damage, okay, we got a regulation, we got standards, okay? This is what you need to have and they go way above and beyond that and they claim, you just damaged my $4,000 mailbox, are we going to hand them this four-by-four post and a mailbox or are we going to replace?
What'll most likely happen in that situation is the party will not accept the post or mailbox as a replacement for what they constructed and that claim would then be submitted to the MMRMA for adjustment.
So, we'd let our insurance company deal with it?
Right, that, yeah, that would be submitted to them for handling.
My biggest concern is if it's not illegal, why are we paying above and beyond for something that's not legally, the right discretion of the?
And I'm, we might not necessarily do so. What I'm saying is, we would submit it to the MMRMA, they would take that into consideration. If it wasn't, if it wasn't legally placed, if it was a danger to the motoring public, for example, they would not pay it. They would not pay it. But again, as you well know, there are circumstances where even though a claim gets denied by an insurance company, a party will sue, sue the county and you might have a judge or jury or someone declare that we're responsible for paying that nonetheless, so.
I think it's a receptive direction, I really do. Ninety-five percent of the mailboxes that get replaced are not hit by the equipment except by the snow.
And essentially, what we're saying is, we're willing to, we're willing to, to put it very bluntly, it's easier to give somebody a mailbox and a post than it is to spend the time to send the supervisor out to investigate, to say, is there evidence of contact by the truck, that sort of thing? It's just frankly cheaper to say, okay, if it was damaged by snow and we know there are snow plowing operations in the area, here's your mailbox, sign a waiver and we're done. And it's just easier to do it that way because it just costs so much more to contest it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner King?
Jim kind of addressed what I was going to talk about. What happens now, and our policy's been, it has to be damaged by snow, or sorry, by equipment to get replaced. We don't argue with people when they come in, same thing. If they say, no, your plow hit the mailbox, they show us a picture of the downed box, we give them a post. We don't send, like Jim said, we don't send someone out to inspect each one because it'd be way too expensive. It's just cheaper to give them the post and the mailbox. So, that's what we've been doing.
Commissioner King?
I agree, but I think what Commissioner Miller is trying to say is, if somebody's got a big masonry mailbox out there, which isn't legal and we haven't made them take it down, and I'm not suggesting that, trust me.
Thank you.
But believe me, we had a managing director that used to send those letters out and that was a big deal about seven years ago.
That is what the policy, the current policy says that we must do that.
Right.
And we're changing it to say that we don't necessarily have to do that.
That was a point, but, so, how, I want to try to figure out the legality of this. If somebody does have a three or $4,000 masonry mailbox that clearly is over eight pounds and not made out of sheet metal plastic or blah, 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 I mean, I mean, I know an idiot that bought his wife a copper mailbox. I mean, I'd never do it again, but.
It's really nice looking.
You know, that's under the eight, or it's eight pounds or 11 pounds or whatever. So, I could see where, you know, it's a few hundred dollar mailbox or whatever. I could see where he'd say, okay, well, we'll give you the $100 or go through the claim process because it wasn't extraordinarily outside of the.
Yeah, remember what our policies are intended to do is to permit staff to act within those policies, within the parameters of those policies. Obviously, things that are outside of those parameters may need to come to you for decision or to the risk manager, MMRMA or whoever that might be, so, yeah. And those outliers would end up being handled that way.
Just case by case, really.
Right.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Well, I was kind of curious as to what the current, you know, policy is. I think you kind of mentioned a little bit already what the current policy is. But then my other concern is, when I think about it, if a citizen or a resident has taken the time to spend $4,000 or so on a mailbox for their home, I really would think I would appreciate the fact, because I'm sure it's beautiful, would have to be, that would have to be one heck of a box, mailbox, but that's gorgeous and I think that we should really consider, you know, if there is damage to it getting it fixed. But I guess my question would be, because we're talking about a mailbox and mail has to be delivered, okay? And it has to be delivered in a certain, I guess, the post office has, the post office has their policy on what they have to put mail into and what's, you know, what they, where they deliver mail. How long does it take? How long does this process? If I call or if I come in and say, my mailbox is down, so I'm not going to get mail today, I'm not going to get mail tomorrow or so like that, what are we doing? I mean.
You can walk out the door with the post and the mailbox right then.
With a post and a mailbox?
Yep.
Right then?
Right then. We have them right, as you come in, our front door, the road department, we've got some sitting right there.
Okay. And does that help with people? I mean, I know it's probably, you know, it's snow and maybe you got a lot of snow and now I gotta figure out a way to, you know, make this stand back up because I can't submit it back in the ground and so what, are people happy with this? Are you, I mean?
Generally.
Generally.
Not everybody. I mean, obviously, there's some people coming, say, I have no way to install that mailbox and those type of things.
Right, so, I guess I just want to say that that's what I have a concern about, is making sure that people are able to get their mail and, you know, go on with their.
I've had cases that were, we get sent out to replace some mailbox and this mailbox has been rotted for 15 years. It's been nailed back together 45 times. It's got more weight.
Stop telling everybody about my mailbox last year.
And they expect to get a brand-new mailbox out of it.
Right.
So, I really appreciate the fact that we're doing something about this, but I think a new mailbox and post or $100 should be the limit. If you have something above and beyond that, we're not going to replace that as much.
Commissioner King?
Right, so, I mean, this kind of goes back a few years where, and we had this exact discussion, if somebody from the corner of Athens or the corner of Albion or Toma or wherever has enough gumption to come into the road department and say, listen, I think something hit my mailbox and then we're going to run somebody all over, it just doesn't, it's so much smarter to just hand them a post. Hand them a post. I wholeheartedly agree.
And people are told that when they call in, you know, if you, you know, if you think we damaged your mailbox and you want one, you can come into the office and we'll give you the box and the post right now, so.
Great. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner E.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, 12B14 is on page 189 and this is a request for your support of a resolution to support refugee resettlement and to the continuation of that into Calhoun County. So, the context behind this is, we have refugees that settle into Calhoun County and have for many, many years, although the number has dwindled drastically. Refugees are very different than asylum seekers. These are legal immigrants that have been vetted in their country and by the United States, but in their country before they come over, over a period of almost two years. They do the medical exams, they do criminal checks and all of that. Once they're legally cleared to come to the United States, they work with the states and they work with generally agencies, like we have some religious agencies and nonprofits. In our case, Samaritan is the designated nonprofit for our area. And those nonprofits provide services to them when they get here, so, language services, housing services, help them to find jobs, things like that. And the federal government provides some funding for these agencies to do that so that local governments like counties and cities aren't, you know, burdened with that. So, this is an ongoing process. What changed is, this past September, just a couple of months ago, there was a presidential executive order that focused on the states and the federal government having to work more closely to coordinate this with actual counties. So, they're required now to seek consent from each county and what would happen is, if the county says, yes, we consent to this continued services, then a company like Samaritan would be able to continue to have a satellite office in Battle Creek like they do now and provide these services. If the county says no, they would likely have to resettle in Kalamazoo or Kent County where they've already consented and then likely, if those refugees had families here in Calhoun County, they would move here anyway, they just wouldn't have the support services that, because the funding wouldn't be available to our county. So, that's what we're asking, is just to have authorized the board chair to sign consent that we could get back to the US Department of State. And we know that, right now, they're mainly in the city of Battle Creek. The city mayor has already consented, but this executive order requires this to be at the county level, not at the local government level.
Yep. All right.
In a nutshell, and Jim Dyer and I had a conference call with these officials a couple of weeks ago and so he may be able to fill in blanks too if you have other questions.
Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution consenting to continued refugee placement as presented and authorize the county board chair to sign the resolution and in the attached letter of transmittal to the US Department of State?
So moved.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Just for the public, when somebody's designated as a refugee, that means they're a legal immigrant. So, often these issues get confused about who is and who isn't, so I want to make sure that folks, did you have a question?
No, just like.
They're legal.
A-legal. Legal, right. So, just for the public to understand that, and Gary, Commissioner Tompkins and I, and I believe Commissioner Smith have all seen presentations in the MPLP program about the refugee system in the state of Michigan and the state government and how that's supported and how it works. Very impressive of what they keep track of and provide assistance to, so it's a good program and I'm glad to see that we're going to offer this and hope everybody supports it. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner E.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 12B15 is on page 193 and this is an equalization director contract, extended contract for next year with Matthew Hansen, who is here tonight. We have also our deputy equalization director, Tom Scott, who is not my cousin, is here as well. He is, Tom is on a daily basis managing the office and we are required to have someone of Matt Hansen's credentials, which is MMAO, based on our tax base within the county to provide oversight and be our certified equalization director. And he has agreed, he works for Kalamazoo County, but has agreed to provide that service for the next year at the same rate, which is a fixed annual amount of $25,000, which has been budgeted. And so, I just really appreciate we're doing well in equalization right now with the succession plan that Roger McEvers helped us to put in place. Tom is working on his MMAO and the state continues to make it more and more difficult, even as he navigates through that program for him to get there. So, we're hoping that, you know, providing the support, all the support that we can to keep him and get him to that level would, is going to be very helpful. And I appreciate both of you guys being here and for keeping us in line for another year.
Can I have a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Matthew Hansen to provide MMAO Level 4 equalization services as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner E.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the last three items are related to finances and I can really speak to all of them at once. 12B16 is on page 197. It's an item we do every year in accordance with the Budget and Accounting Act and audit requirements, which is, at the end of the year, we do a final budget adjustments in general fund and other budgetary funds to make sure that our revenues and expenses are in line and that we're not showing overspending versus budget in the audit. are in line and that we're not showing overspending versus budget in the audit report. So our finance department and all of our countywide leadership were asked to review their budgets and, and help us make sure that we've got that final budget adjustment as accurate as possible. We've done that for the general fund, which is probably what you care about the most. Because the adjustments exceed $20,000, they're coming before you. So it's basically a lot of adjustments in different departments that net to bottom line of zero. The, the general fund, we expect to end the year without using fund balance, so no deficit spending, which is good. We did have some shortfalls in revenues that fortunately were covered in corresponding shortfalls or underspending in expenditures mainly due to salary lag, vacancies in areas like the sheriff's office that cause him pain, but they actually saved on the, on the expenditure side. And then also, we've been talking about our health insurance costs. Our claims are doing very well. Our trend is very good this year and so we're able to lower the health insurance cost that gets charged to the general fund, really to make it balanced. There's also balanced budget adjustments for our special revenue funds and internal service funds and that, those details are all attached. And so we ask for your support and give credit to Megan Banning, who is our deputy controller, who manages this process, and, and also Gerald Shepke, the other deputy controller, who are both here tonight. Thank you guys for being here.
Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 final budget adjustments for the general fund and several special revenue funds as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
And so the last two items are for information only. These are the monthly financial statements for the county's general fund and for the road department, which of course has a separate set of books. And the reason I said I could speak all at once about the finance items is really the budget adjustments incorporate the story that's within the November financial statement. So with one month to go in the fiscal year, we're able to identify those variances and note that in both cases, general fund and, and the road department, we're, we see things to be pretty on track. There will be lots of year-end adjustments that always happen, just because we're continuing to, to pay December bills for the next month and a half or so. And we have a new auditor that will be looking at the, the year-end financial statements at the end of the year, but through November, happy to report that things are going well and the budget adjustments will make things even closer to, to budget.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County November 2019 financial statements for information only?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Actually, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And just go ahead and do the, can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County Road Department November 2019 financial statements for information only?
So moved.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' time, our next item on citizens' time, the same rules applies during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Anyone like to address their commissioners? Anyone? Last chance. All right, we're moving on. Commissioners' time. Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, I would like to take this time. This being our last meeting of the year 2019 and the holidays coming, I've wanted to take this time to say to my colleagues, you guys here and the staff of the county, that I appreciate you guys so much helping me get through as a freshman, helping me this year. And all, each and every one of my colleagues here, you guys, in your own special way, some kind of a way, you guys have made the transition for myself as a community leader and being involved, that transition that you make into being a board member. You've made it much easier, you've made the experience enjoyable and I wouldn't have been able to do it without each and every one of you guys. So from the bottom of my heart, I say to all of you, thank you so much for being there and supporting me in my endeavors. I'm still a freshman. But, yeah, okay, sophomore, nobody sold me an elevator pass or anything like that. So I just wanna say thank you all and I hope that you guys all have a happy holiday and safe new year. And I'd like to thank everyone that comes and comes out. It's been just a wonderful experience and I'm honored to be here.
Commissioner Miller? Thank you.
I'm gonna wait on announcements. Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Tompkins?
Yeah, I just wanna certainly echo, certainly it's been a pleasure to have you on board, certainly this past year, as well as, I just wanna wish my colleagues, the staff, certainly all of our employees in Calhoun County, as well as you folks out there this evening and all, everybody in Calhoun County a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Hopefully, everybody gets a chance to spend some time with their families. So I know I will be and have a little downtime, so it's great to have that opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. I wanna add on to a little bit what the sheriff talked about earlier and having the president and vice president and the teamwork that went into that. And I'm not sure that a few years ago that teamwork really existed, especially in law enforcement. So when you see that work happening, we're, I'm grateful for the leadership of Jim Blocker and Chief Saxton, or Sheriff Saxton, sorry about that, didn't get demoted. But I, I'll tell you, there's, 20 years ago, and, and I'm sure the sheriff has had the same experiences, 20 years ago, working with the Secret Service was not fun. The Secret Service of today is very interactive and very helpful and it made it much, much more enjoyable for everybody to experience it. So I, I think we, I need to shout out to them. They're not gonna hear it, but I, I hope they continue in that manner. The folks at Life Care and, and Emergent Health, Health Partners, my, my parent organization, we had quite a few folks there last night and let me tell you, it was cold. It was 14 degrees, 10 to mile an hour winds. And, and that's weather that in 15 minutes or less, you can have frostbite with exposed skin. So we put a lot of resources, a lot of people into that event. I think, yeah, we spent a lot of money too, but I, I'll tell you what, it's a lifetime event for a community like Calhoun County to host something like that. And I don't think, I don't think it's the end of what we're gonna see, quite frankly. That signals to me that Calhoun County is a, is a very important to both parties to win this coming November. So I expect that we're gonna see Democrat candidates in town or in the community. I think we'll see some return visits, at least at the, um, uh, lower levels. So be ready, be ready to understand that the folks behind the scenes are working hard to get that done. And I did have five minutes of fame last night. I had 10 texts after it was all done where I crossed behind the president and when I got done with that little venture into the VIP section, I had 10 texts, get off the TV. So.
He's not, he didn't all save it.
Yeah, my brother was the first, one of my brothers was the first, so, but it was fun. I don't wanna do it again for a while, but many thanks to everybody that put time and effort into that. And by the way, the county included. So the two flags back here, the Michigan flag and the American flag, were displayed in a building, inside the building for a vice presidential meeting. So in a small way, we contributed even as the commissioners, so. All right, claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve claims payable on November 28th, 2019 through December 12th, 2019 for $3,400 check, $3,461,617.86 as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee? Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattler?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Announcements now from the 7th District?
No, no, believe it or not, I have no announcements tonight.
No way.
It's kinda, it's, it's the Christmas season, so everybody's just enjoying it and very few things going on, so, yeah.
Commissioner Miller?
We lost a very special person. It was our Ringo Township Supervisor on Monday the 9th, Dwayne Pete Schrantz, I know him as Pete. Uh, he's been a township supervisor for a few years, been on board before that. He started serving his community as a firefighter in 88. I've known Pete my entire life. And around three years old, he's come pick our milk up. And he always had a big smile on his face and he always had something to say with a big smile on his face.